I'll call this the order and I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second. Motion on second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, second.
Alright, motion on second, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. With that, I'll read the resolution and certification of executive session. Whereas the Tassau County Council has convened an executive session on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom Declaration Act. Whereas 2.1-344.1 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this council that such executive session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved, the Tassau County Council hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public issues, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive session to which this certification resolution applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive session were heard, discussed, and considered by the county council. The town council, town people. And we'll deal with whole call vote. Councilman Fox?
Aye.
Councilman Klein?
Aye.
Councilman Hakens?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Beasley?
Aye.
Alright, with that being resolved, we will go into our regular council meeting, called order, and we please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Megan, would you please give us a name of the question?
Sure. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much that we can gather tonight and come in freely and welcome one another and be welcomed when we come in. And thank you for those that are making decisions and having discussions tonight. Ask you to just bless our reading with peaceful resolutions, peaceful discussion. Help us to walk out here and know we've been part of the process. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We'll start out with a special presentation request. First, the imagination library program update, Erica Galloway. Okay, we will move on. She comes in, we'll let her think it. Next would be National 4H Week Proclamation. Tammy Bishop, please.
Hello, and of course Tammy Sparks and my program assistant is Kathy Dalton. We have the 4H Extension Agency here in Tassau County and we just wanted to come by and thank you guys for all that you have been doing for Tassau County 4H and helping us with our programs. We are an organization that we work over 1,000 units throughout the year and we have six active 4H clubs. We focus on everything from STEM projects to agriculture and most important, we are trying to create good citizens that will become leaders and lead us when we get older. And we're off to a great start and we do want to let you guys know that we was able to take 46 kids to camp this year with the help of other businesses around the town and because of that, we are very grateful. A lot of kids don't get an opportunity to go places through the summer and to them, this is their vacation. And they learn a lot of life skills and they create a lot of friends and a lot of memories and we are very grateful for that. We want to thank you for helping make Tassau County 4H the best be the better. I did bring a few of our speakers to speak to you guys tonight, so I'll ask Sophia, she will come up and speak to you guys first.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Robinson and is a president to represent Tassau County 4H this evening. The 4H program has long served as a foundation for youth development in our community, providing opportunities that encourage leadership, communication, and service. Through my experience as a Sapples, Virginia 4H team leadership council reporter historian, Tassau County 4H team co-president, and now the first individual from Tassau County to serve on the Sapples, to serve as a Sapples district ambassador on the Virginia 4H cabinet, I've witnessed how this program empowers young people to grow to capable and competent leaders. 4H extends far beyond livestock shows and camp activities. It instills values of responsibility, confidence, and civic engagement. It provides young people with the tools to discover their passions, whether agriculture, public speaking, or community service, and to use those skills to strengthen the places they call home. The impact of 4H is profound. It gives use of voice, foster meaningful friendships, and creates experiences that prepare them for future success. On the behalf of Tassau County 4H, I extend sincere appreciation to the Tassau County Town Council for its continued support. Your investment in local youth programs makes a lasting difference, helping students attend camp, participate in leadership opportunities, and serve their communities with purpose. Because you're committed, 4H continues to shape the next generation of leaders right here in Tassau County. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dani Sparks. I am the president of the Tassau County 4H Sharpshoe Dusters Club. I'm also the 4H livestock, where I can be in stockings and livestock judging. I would like to thank you for sponsoring us, the Go Camp. Because of your help, it allows kids to be able to go to camp to create many various experiences. Thank you.
I'm Happy England and I'm in the 4H livestock club and I really like it. It's really fun and I get to watch some really cool stuff. Thank you.
We are super proud of all of them. As you see, we have went from our seniors down to our juniors. Howie just became a junior this year and she, they won't be such, she's more clever than us, than he's been in here of 64 years. Well, we're crying and we're covering engines. So we're very proud of all of them. They've got a lot to accomplish as they grow older and I feel they're going to be very successful in life. We appreciate your time and we also would like to get a picture with you all before we leave. So if you guys.
Vertical first and then see, I tried to pick vertical. There we go. One, two, three. Alright, say cheese on three. One, two, three, cheese. There we go. Great. Would y'all like a horizontal? That was a good last group.
And we have, we have one more thing to take into this. We have a proclamation, last week was National 4H Week and I'll open up for, for a motion to, to make this proclamation. Motion to approve. Alright, we have a motion on second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Alright, motion carries. And with that, I'll make this proclamation and then you and I can have another picture. Whereas this year's National 4H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that the 4H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today. Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization supporting 6 million youth across the country and whereas 4H, our 4H programs are delivered by the Virginia Cooperative Extension System, a community of more than 100 public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation that provides experiences for young people to learn by doing. Whereas 4H is in every city and county in the United States and helps 6 million youth become engaged, successful, and independent and whereas 4H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experiential and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development and whereas expanding from its strong agricultural roots, 4H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults and whereas supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for the U.S. Department of Agriculture and Natural, National Institute of Food and Agriculture 4H Program and now therefore I, Vice Mayor Joe R. Beasley, do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as National 4H Week throughout Tassau, Virginia, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize 4H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hands on this 14th of October, 2025. Alright, next on the agenda. Southwest Virginia Community College Festival of the Arts Support Request, Manager Reed.
I have received a letter from Susan Lowe with Southwest Virginia Community College. She says, "I hope this message found you well. I'm writing to express my sincere appreciation for the steadfast support the talent Tassau has shown to the Southwest Virginia Community College Festival of the Arts program over the years. Your generosity has played a vital role in making the arts accessible, enriching, and meaningful to our entire region. In 2026, our nation prepares to mark a historic milestone, America's 250th anniversary. It is with great pride and patriotic spirit that SNC C announces the theme for the upcoming festival, celebrating America's 250th, scheduled for April the 10th through the 19th, 2026. The special edition of Festival of Arts will unite our community in a powerful tribute to the American story. Through music, visual arts, dance, food, storytelling, and educational programming, we aim to reflect on the rich tapestry of our nation's history while celebrating the promise of its future. We are proud to welcome local and national talent and we will continue to serve our schools and citizens across the region with performances and events that will inspire student pride and cultural connection." They said they thank us again for our ongoing commitment to the arts and the people of Southwest Virginia and they are asking again that we continue our partnership. Last February in 2024, we did donate $500 to Festival of the Arts.
Love it. There's no, no real way to measure how many citizens of Tassau are impacted by this position.
It's not, but I know.
I know that. A lot, a lot of the kids in our homeschooling co-op, went to it last year, it was a good experience for them, so I do know a lot of youth in town are impacted by it. I'll go ahead and make a motion for $500 support. I'll second. Okay, we've got a motion on the second, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Alright, next on the agenda, we have local business representation, unfortunately we have none. The next would be approval of the minutes for the council meeting on September 9th, 2025. You've got a motion?
Second.
On the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the financial statements and financial report for September 2025. entertain a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Got a motion on the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Next we have committee and conference updates. First is the Planning Commission Committee, John Dylan and property management official, Herb.
Last Monday, October 6th, we met. We opened the meeting, approved the minutes, and Chris Wormuth met us at the new medical office and we did a tour inside out, looked at everything. Probably the timeline, I think, was December, the finishing of the building, so we're paving this week. We got probably 67% of the sheetrock inside, it's all bright in, so we're moving our off of it. That's our whole meeting out there.
Any question? Alright, we'll move on. Industrial Hickory Development Authority Chairperson Spatter.
Hello, hello everyone. We had our regularly scheduled meeting last Monday. Part of our agenda, we're seeking an EBAG application for a new business that's going to open down Fencastle, so hopefully we will recognize that in December when they open. Then we, the main agenda item was our group wanted to plan for our future joint meeting so that we can decide on how we think our currently owned properties should be prioritized and some potential ideas for what those could be redeveloped into. We had a special guest, Jordan Dillon from the Homestead Plateau Planning District, who came to kind of rally our group to still prioritize the redevelopment of the Riverside Drive location, that's going to be across the street from the Farmer's Market. And as we talked last month, we think that could be a good destination for a fab lab or a place that has access to technology, craft type of equipment, as well as maybe a commercial kitchen and/or canary if the county is still interested in partnering on the canary portion, but we haven't continued discussions with any stakeholders regarding that since we just met last week. But the message that Jordan really wanted to hand over to us is that 2026 is going to be a pretty critical funding year for this type of trades work because of the governor's pending agenda. She also provided examples of other rural locations like us that have this type of co-op opportunity for like a maker space or, and also emphasized the different types of safeguards that we could have in place. One example was, you know, if someone is participating at the fab lab and might be using our equipment to start their own new small business, one of the things that we could implement is then working with the Small Business Development Center at Southwest. So again, just leaning into the importance of community partnerships and it sounds like we already have a really great partnership with the youth program like 4H. So basically just kind of, she was really giving us, I feel like motivation to keep seeing that that is a project worth prioritizing and to really start the networking process and the planning process of how we want to go about feasibility and planning work for that. And that was the, really the majority of what we talked about was just kind of how we want to prep for our future meeting of QAL. And then Leanne has good updates about the Farmer's Market, it's an agenda item later. Do you guys have any questions for, for us?
No, I was actually able to attend that meeting and like how you emphasize the networking and co-oping because that's going to be key for that project, I think, between the Community Career Medical Center, Southwest, program like 4H and those kinds of things, I think those, it's going to take a team effort to do that. So I think it's a great start. We're excited for that.
I like all the parties you're involved with, the partnership part, you know, were you referring then to Southwest or if they want to use your equipment to start their brand? Please help the public. I'm learning to educate, I apologize.
You're okay.
I'll get it.
It's alright. Next on the agenda is Tassau Today and we call this executive review.
Alright, so I don't know if you all saw your packet, you have some flyers for some of the events that we have coming up, so basically just wanted to give you an update of what else is going on this fall. So our events that we have coming up on Halloween night, October 31st, we're having Truck or Treat up on Main Street. Thank you for letting us have it on Main Street. Zach and I really wanted it someplace else.
I mean, Tassau Avenue would be a great spot.
It would be a great spot for it. I'll should work on seeing how we can get that to happen. So we're going to have Truck or Treat up on Main Street. We are collecting candy donations because with the amount of people that come in for Truck or Treat, usually towards the end, the trunks start running low. So we usually, Tassau Today gets about $500 worth of candy to help replenish, but with it being on Main Street, I'm afraid that that's not going to cut it. So we will of course provide that, but we are also taking up candy donations. Anybody that wants to donate candy can do that at Town Hall, train station, police department, and at the Tassau Bridge or the library. So just don't blow your candy.
Which, did you mention it on the, on the Facebook post?
I, I mentioned it on my last Facebook post.
Okay.
And I've distributed all of the containers to hold the candy, so hopefully it.
Would we be able to push that over in the west region? It takes an enormous amount of candy.
Yes. Yeah, usually the people that give out candy, it's a lot. And we're hoping to have a really good turnout. We have usually had a good turnout when it's on Main Street. So, and then that is on a Friday, come Sunday, that is going to be Veterans Parade. That is November 2nd and that is the event, they have a parade starting from high school coming up to Main Street, we will have a program up on Main Street. We have a veterans committee that is working on getting all of that together. We've worked with several veterans groups to pull that together and it's really, we facilitate it, but it's their show. Then as part of our fundraising efforts, we're going to have a bingo on November 9th, that is the next Sunday. Then we also have Turkey Trot, which, perillustrious. Here's Bobby. She pretty much takes it and runs with it. Yeah, yeah, that actually is on the table, but I'll take it. But yeah, it's usually, it's a really fun event, come out, decked, you know, dressed in costume, there's goods for fastest dog, fastest stroller, best age groups, best costume. Yeah, and we're also collecting for Child Shell Latham Food Bakery. So as part of the proceeds go to the Child Shell Latham Food Bakery and also Tassau Today.
A Child Shell Latham?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So it's always, it's, it's really fun, it's a great way to start out Thanksgiving morning. Then on December 5th, we're going to have our gingerbread house workshop. In the past, we've had it on a Sunday, but a lot of people, a lot of the kids that come to the workshop that want to build a gingerbread house, they then want to take it home and don't enter it in the gingerbread house competition that goes along with the winter market. So we've gotten permission to have the gingerbread house workshop in the board supervisors' chambers, which is where the competition is. So hopefully we'll get a bunch of people that will actually leave their house as part of the competition. So and then that next morning, we have the winter market. After the winter market, we have the Christmas parade. And the theme for this year's Christmas parade is Christmas in the country. So then in addition to that, every third Thursday, we have a board of directors meeting that is actually going to be this Thursday, the 16th, and that is going to be in here. Then the third Monday at noon, we have our design committee meeting and that is at the Tassau Today office. The third Tuesday at 4:30 at the Hivey Goat, we have the Economic Vitality Committee. And the fourth Tuesday at 6, we have a promotion committee at the American Legion Hall. In addition to that, we're also having the veterans committee meeting, we have a meeting coming up for them next Tuesday and we'll probably have one the Tuesday after that too, I'm guessing, since it's so close to the veterans committee. And that is over at the American Legion. That one is at 5:30 next week. And then the Christmas committee right now is meeting the 28th at 5, right before the promotion committee. And we're also, this has not been set yet, but we're going to have our organization committee meeting set and we're going to get ready to start working on our work plan and budget for next year. So if there's anything that you all can think of, that you want to see, or any things that you want different, let us know.
Did, did we offload the public works during the ice rink this year?
Yes. Yes. Public, or the rec departments doing the ice rink.
Where's it going to be?
It's going to be at the. Yeah. Yeah, and I think you all already put out, it's opening the 20 something, is it the week of our work? Yeah.
Hope for better weather.
A terrific place, it was the Chamber.
Chamber?
I thought it was a very good event.
It was, it was, it was, it stood right all the way down Main Street. Can't fix that and all the restaurants are, you know, the restaurants.
I just came in front of their wrap-up meeting, so they were talking about how everything went, so I think we went along and watched.
Hey, I'm assuming we had here, what's one of the things I think should be considered when looking at your budget when you got funding here?
Yes.
Is how the, what Fourth Fridays are what we're in this year?
Fourth Fridays is what we did this year. We want to do something that we know we're not set on Fourth Friday, it can be First Friday, Second Friday, Tuesday. I mean, it, we're not set on a specific day, but I would like to start having something throughout the summer that is set up the way we were doing Fourth Friday.
Okay. And maybe this year, and I guess once our ETA of the pavilion, maybe there's a way to incorporate that as the summer comes along?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Have that discussion here shortly. But I did notice, like, I think there was one where perhaps there was like an early football game or something, it impacts the.
It did. Well, and that one, whenever I was booking the entertainment for that one, there was no football game. That was definitely after. Yep. And I think it was a scrimmage or a charity, yeah, benefit that came up. And it did, we still had a decent attendance even with the football game, so, and I think, you know, having it to where just that parking lot is closed, it doesn't impede a whole lot, but it's still something that people can come out to and have fun.
Well, thanks. Thank you. With that, we move on to unfinished business and we have the second reading and approval of land use assessment ordinance amendment. I will open forward to any motions that would like to waive this reading. I'll make that motion. I'll second. We've got a motion on the second, any discussion? If, if we'll waive it, I'm, I'm good with that. Very good. Thank you. I just want to hear it again, I'll come in. We have a motion on the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Alright, motion carries. And then I'll open forward for a motion to approve the, the review. Motion to approve. Alright, we've got a motion. Alright, we got a motion on the second, any discussion? And all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, the motion carries, and that will be effective 30 days from today. Is that right, Brad?
Sorry.
That, that motion carried, so that'll be effective 30 days?
Yes, 30 days from today.
Alright.
26, I'll get her to version I have, that you all saw, had all of the yellow highlighted versions of the changes, so I'll get a clean one for tomorrow. Okay, just like to run the vote, it'll affect 30 days from today.
So, good. And then, next, we need to ratify the resolution of support for the Commonwealth of Platteville Regional Opportunity Program and the C-Prop grant application. Andrew, do we want to remember?
Oh, I got it up here.
Okay.
So, I made a motion to approve the resolution of support for the $50,000 C-Prop application.
And I second the motion. And all, any discussion? Those were the motions and seconds via email, and with that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Do we need to record anything where there was a vote for a member that's not here? Like, we're rat, we just, we voted to ratify that.
You got a quorum to vote, you have, you should be okay.
Okay.
Since the fact that they're not here, they can't vote to ratify. It doesn't affect it, you got a quorum, you're good.
Okay.
I'd like to vote.
Next, next is our new business, and we will start with the Mayor vacancy discussion. It's got me listed, and first of all, I'd like to say, as we all know, Mayor Biggs has stepped down, and I would just like to say, I commend him for his efforts as mayor. He was always good to be out and talk to the public and put, you know, a good face for it, and, you know, really listen to people and bring those concerns to those on the council. And so, I want to lead off this discussion by saying that. And then, with that, I want to kind of open the floor for the council on this discussion. We had a, well, wait, you want to take it from here?
I can. So, we've had a discussion with our legal counsel, and in our town charter, there are two different avenues that we can move forward with. One version of our town charter says that the Vice Mayor shall step into the seat of mayor. In another section of our town charter, it says that the council may appoint an interim mayor to be the remainder of that term. I think at this time, we are going to remain for this meeting with our Vice Mayor running the meeting. And at this meeting, not appointing that seat at the moment. However, when that time comes, we will have a vacant seat on our council. And as per the Virginia Code, we will need to advertise for any applications and resumes that would like to come forward to serve on our town council for the remaining period or until we can have a special election. Is that correct, Brad?
Just a couple of clues. Not to be critical, just the one, just to clarify. The two sections within the charter talk about the replacement of the mayor as a shall. Also, then the other code section that allows the vacant seat to be filled by the council is also a shall. So, it's not like you get, one is more superior to the other, so it really comes down to where you have the two options, the way our charter reads. So, if, at this point in time, if the Vice Mayor stepping up to run the meeting until the council makes that appointment, that is doable under our existing charter. And then, if it is one where then Mr. Beasley becomes the mayor, there will be an open spot that will be, during pursuant to state code, will be advertised for submission of application of resumes to the council for their consideration. A public hearing will have to be held, and seven days, at least seven days prior to the actual interim appointment being made. And that appointment then will fill, basically, for the unexpired term of Mr. Beasley, Councilman Beasley's seat, until an election, due to special election next year, can actually occur in November of 26. Not to be too critical.
What he said.
You're correct.
I mean, for transparency, if we were to make this appointment today, we wouldn't have a quorum up here to complete the meeting, so there's, that's the primary reason.
And the other advantage is that we get a new council member next month after the election. We're able to get them in, the town gets more representation, and adds to the transparency. It allows for collaboration amongst all council members. And then we will bill time in to appoint a council member until next year's election, where we'll be full up camp.
And you had that for time to do, of all that you discussed, to make that work, so that the public can be involved and get their input purposes of the public here.
Right. And then, after this is all done, we should clean up the code. I think that was a recommendation from?
Mr. President, that's a suggestion.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, with that, we'll move forward. We have a crosswalk discussion, Ken, is there a problem?
Yes. I was approached by a member in the community that inquired as to why we don't have a crosswalk on Tassle Avenue, that because we have a playground there, and it's a busy street. And we briefly discussed this in the past. We didn't take any action on it at that time. When discussing crosswalks with other members of the community, another one that was brought up would be the intersection of Tassle Avenue and Finn Castle, a lot of runners on that stretch. It's the flattest loop that we got in town, and it could be a way to increase safety in those areas. When I put it to the council in an email, I recommended that we zoom out and look at, are there any other areas maybe targeted this comprehensively? We got a new park, Warrior Park, that's being opened. Warhawk, what did I say? Warhawk Park, that's being opened. And just, I think it's an achievable target, we can make it safer for the kids. Crossing the street, Tassle Avenue is one of those that, it's a primary ingress egress route in town, and a lot of law enforcement drive very quickly on that. We do have some flashers up. Whatever we gotta do to get illegal would be appropriate. I know in the past, we talked about the compliance and the regulations the VDOT has, and that's been a concern, which ties into cost. Andrew, you got any words of advice for us on that?
I do. So, I've spoken with representative for VDOT, and they have said that we are able to implement crosswalks where there is a need, and it sounds like there is a need, with there being community activity with the parks. As long as we meet the VDOT signage requirements, we are able to implement those sidewalks, I'm sorry, crosswalks. So, as long as we put up the correct signage and the distances from the crosswalks, we can do that. And I have spoken with their Public Works Department, and I had not spoken to them about Tassle Avenue, Finn Castle, but at the park on Tassle Avenue, and that is something that we will be doing. So, we will get those signage requirements met and place a sidewalk, crosswalk.
Any idea what the estimated cost of putting one in?
I don't know an exact amount, but a few signs and some paint, it's, it's very good.
Yeah, what's the time?
We have someone doing actual handwork on the painting, like stoplars and crosswalks now. And they hope to be able to be finished with that part by October, so hopefully, maybe by the end of November, we can have those crosswalks painted.
Wow, that's pretty quick.
I appreciate that. And I didn't include it in this, but I'm gonna see if I can go a little squirrely. Another item that I think in just town communication, our dog park is fantastic, and there are dogs around. I think shade and trees would be appropriate in there. We did have folks come to us and talk about erosion control in that area, but, you know, so trees would certainly help with that, but it also helped with the shade. I'm not super particular on what type of trees. I've learned that you probably need to be pretty specific on what you're looking for. Maybe Miss Kim Santal would be a good person to speak to regarding what types of trees, you know, fast growth, slow growth, shadeage, all that.
Safer dogs.
Safer dogs, maybe something that's not gonna fall, you know, and damage the fence. But that could be, that could be an easy, achievable target.
How many people goes out there every day at the dog park?
I'm not sure.
I do know, my daughter had a birthday party at the Y, and we could overlook that. There were several people out there.
Just one day or several days. So, a lot of dogs walk up at the Linkshire Park, and, you know, they'll clean up what they drop. And I don't know, the dog park, the dog park, you know, I hope they do clean up when the dogs are there playing around. But how can you eliminate that when you got a dog park?
Compostable waste bags, I'm not sure they were packed through there.
I think we got the tools in place out there. You got a trash can, you got the bags. We've got it distributed in town, and they're out in the charter.
So, I will speak with, I will speak with Santal.
It's also, it's also out there, Linkshire Park, right at the start. They got trash bags there, doggy bags, that you pull out and go with the dog. Hell, they keep one crap in front of me when I'm fishing.
That's a sign.
Yeah, and he haven't had a good word, probably, too. And you don't need, you know, they do, they don't carry their doggy bags around unless they're going to take the dog to our park. Well, that's not good when you go by and smell those crabs. Needs to be cleaned up out there while, while the dog. But the dog parks, what I'm looking at is, they need to go to dog park. And if they want to walk, and, you know, I don't care if they do the walk around the park down there. But it's not right for, go out to Linkshire Park and let the dogs do the roddings. But, and the fishing wise, you know, you got some dogs that jumps in the water while fishing. And that's, that's bad for the fishermen. But I don't care about, you know, jumping in the water somewhere else away from the fishermen that hack off.
If we approved the area, maybe it gets utilized more, and it's on the right path. The only other question I have on the dog park, I don't recall the original discussions with it, but we, water access out there? Like, there's water for the dogs, right? It's like the, I mean, I've seen them as water fountains with a pool at the bottom. I mean, there's obviously a creek out there, but have we done all the improvements that we were set out to do for the dog park?
To answer that honestly, I'm not sure what all, what's supposed to implement, but I will research that. And if it's okay, I'll report back on the trees painted to that mix zone.
I do remember us talking about.
What's the cost out there now? What's the cost out there at Dog Park? Is it over $30,000?
The cost to maintain it?
Yeah, well, maintain it and putting the fence line in and all that, and then I heard, gonna put things on the inside, that I hadn't heard of. It becomes my intention in reference to patch the end of the park.
Let me research that and bring it back to next month, if that's okay. We'll put it as an agenda item.
Sure, sounds good.
Okay.
Alright, last question I got is on the, like, leaves on sidewalks. I think typically every year, we'll have big vacuum truck come out. Is it any ETA on that? Is that later in season, Public Works set up?
Anytime that our citizens would like to have their leaves picked up, we're gonna kind of treat it like a one-time free pickup. We would encourage to wait a little bit later and let the leaves all fall. But one-time free pickup for any customer that would like to come in and do a work order.
What are you talking about? High property or public?
Well, in sidewalks, but I think that they do that incrementally throughout the fall.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Oh, it's okay, that answered another question, but, but are we actually with the sidewalks, I guess?
Sidewalk maintenance, we can take care of that.
Okay, thank you much.
Back to you, the next one, Mountain Bike Project out there.
Right. We had set a goal earlier this year, a concept that we had discussed as a council in several meetings earlier this year, is utilization of our property that we hold outside of town limits to implement mountain bike trucks in that area. And we kind of set a rough goal of getting our easements in place for October, somewhere in October. And we've got those, just kind of a status update as to where we are?
Tomorrow, I have meetings with both property owners. And they have easements in hand, so they could get rid of them. And I have meetings with both of the direct property owners.
There was a photo of one?
There was one with Commonwealth of Virginia, and that was for the property that is off to the right, to the east.
Part of the east.
But that was not the actual one, we were wanting to use it for the mountain biking.
Oh, okay.
But the two direct property owners from the mountain biking property, we have discussed, we will be talking tomorrow. So, if you'd like, I'll let you go back and see more.
The property to the east.
What about the control of certain?
Yes. Is that other town piece of property? It could be used, but get those water to go across.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Could you repeat that?
No, the other property to the east is the one that is, the other town, large tract out there that's separated by the 60-acre Commonwealth of Virginia tract. And if you're gonna utilize it, you'd have to go across the Commonwealth, but you're not gonna can do that now. It's not gonna be a factor.
Okay. Well, I can hear your opinion on this. While we're targeting the easements, would it be good to get those for both tracts of land? We a little bit past that now that you're meeting with them tomorrow? Is that something that you can see utility can do?
So, I do know that he has been trying to contact someone with the Commonwealth of Virginia for that parcel to obtain an easement for that one as well. So, yes, I do think, let's continue with that avenue. I do not think it's crucial for the mountain biking project, but I do think it would be a good avenue to go ahead and explore.
Okay. I just haven't had enough. We've had one return phone call, and I tried to call Mr. Mitchell twice, and he is the, he is an estate property tax person at the state level, and I'm trying to use him as a conduit to find the actual person who got the authority to sign off or give authority for the property to get the easement obtained, but so far, it's been a hit or miss, and unfortunately, twice I'm trying to get a hold of him.
I'll keep working on it.
Is that, I mean, do you all approve moving forward to try to get that easement as well?
I think it'd be appropriate. I mean, it's unused land, and if you have it in place, I mean, you've got a God knows recreation director, there's, perhaps there's opportunities. One of the things we've, in talking to different firms that build these trails, they say, fantastic that the town of Tassle has an additional parcel, because frequently, what we see is trails get built, and there's annual funding opportunities, and they run out of space. So, if we do have that now, that's vision casting way off in the future, but I do think it could be beneficial since we're looking at it.
Building off of a minimum of the other two major priorities.
That's correct. That's correct.
I'm against it. Simple, I'm against it. I know that people's gonna say, you always say nay on the town. Well, I'm saying nay on this one.
Explain why.
I don't care easement or nothing, that water out there is just town, that's not gonna have to get touched so many years. And now you go out there and take mountain bike, I don't, you know, I, yes, you know, the mountain bike stuff, the issue is, who's patrolling it, who's gonna take care of it out there? And another thing is, why can't we put something in town, their own town, with their taxpaying money, and put a bike patrol in here or a mountain bike? I mean, you got a property, you can talk to people in town about it, but now you're gonna take it out grabbing away from, it's gonna cost a heck of a lot of money out there. And you're gonna, what are you gonna do? Bring it, have the mountain bike thing out there where people like to go on a mountain bike ride or something? Why can't they do it in their hometown?
Right off exit one.
Do what?
Right off exit one, you gotta right in that. Right off exit one, you gotta right in that.
And along that town. Cause you don't have any control out there, no control at all. It's gonna cost a lot of money for patrolling, it's gonna cost a lot of money for anything damaged out there. It's gonna, it's crazy. That water, there, there's no pumps or anything on that water out there. It free flows all the way to the water plant and it's good drinking water. Now you screw up that place out there, you're gonna have big problems. You might not, it might, the mountain bikes might be good out there, but you might have dirt bikes out there, four wheels out there. It's hard to tell what they put out there. And you start messing with our town water, is EPA can top two or check into? Can you not have the EPA?
We have not yet.
So where we're at in this, too.
No, I mean, it's time, I mean, you go ahead and keep doing that, but it's, to me, it's, uh, it's, it's dangerous for our, our town. That we're getting water from that area that hadn't been touched so many years. I, I don't think we should even touch that out there. Maybe walk if you wanna walk, but I don't think, you know, adding stuff or building stuff for a mountain biking out there. But we got a town, it'd be like to have people, senior citizens, like we want to drive a bike in town. But out here, we gonna drive all that brat and just enjoy our, our water plate.
So I want to address some of your concerns.
They won't serve me, it's no for me, I don't care.
I mean, I, I think it's good to, to have discussion. Uh, if you recall from our April meeting, uh, we brought in a couple, uh, Dave and Adrian Guitara, who have been instrumental in setting up the trails in Knoxville. Uh, water was an issue in that locality as well. In, in terms of dealing with the EPA and, or, um, forget what the Virginia branch. DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality. If you utilize firms that do this on the regular. Uh, one of the firms we talked to, he has jobs in Shenandoah National Forest, Pittsburgh, outside of Pittsburgh. These folks do this for their vocation, for their living. And, and working those channels and ensuring that the red tapes, you know, took, we toe the line on that. These, these groups have practiced with that. The other reason for pursuing a project like this is it's another opportunity. We're, we're, we are trying as a locality to cooperate with the county to, to hit objectives together. If you look at the Commonwealth Plateau Planning District's outdoor recreation guide, uh, that was published in, I think it was March of this year. They identify Townsboro, Virginia as, uh, the hub and spoke, or the hub. Because we have the restaurants because of our destination site that we already have for one line tourism, which is the back of the dragon. You're able to, uh, build on those successes and expand your tourism. Now, if you read your email this week, uh, I had sent out our revenue comparing twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-four, which we're waiting on our twenty twenty-five audit, which is coming up next month. And if you look and adjust our revenue for inflation, you'll see that out of all the categories, the only two categories that we are, we are actually beating twenty twenty-one numbers are in meals taxes. And then it's the other, the other taxes, which I think trans occupancy taxes falls underneath. So to say that recreation and tourism is not an avenue for town growth, right? I, the numbers say otherwise. And I like numbers because they don't really care about opinions, they speak for themselves. So with that, we, earlier this spring, we already procured and, and it will be used for the feasibility and, and the designs. The county has, uh, already put in, we have received, yeah, so I don't wanna say it that way. The county's gonna give us sixty thousand dollars in order to get this started. And then we'll, we'll move on to the discussions, uh, after that. We're at the initial phase of it. We're just into getting easements and access to the property. And there's a lot of different options. Do I think it could be done in town? I think you could. I, I think that that's a good place where you could pivot to. We've got the space out in Lake Shriver that you could pivot to. But creating a destination to, to branch off of our success that we're already seeing with two, one set of two wheels and taking it to, you know, foot powered bicycles, I, I don't see an environmental concern. Did, did you have anything else that I didn't address or you wanna talk about further?
Oh, no, that's, mine's absolutely not to go out there. I, I think about our people in our hometown.
Right.
And I think we can bring people in our town if we have something like that in our town. I don't understand how y'all would get, it, it's just, I don't like messing with their drinking water, period. It's not there's two, but not a period.
I'd like to, I'd like to build off what Zach said too. We, one of the other pieces of this that we discussed, what, what brought this up is we wanted to utilize property that the town already owns. And that we don't have to go out and purchase. So it's a, it was a non, for like, let's turn a non-revenue, uh, asset that we could now bring people into our area. The lack of stores, the lack of, uh, groceries, the lack of those type of stores out in Grattan. If people come from a destination to Grattan to do mountain biking, they would essentially have to come through town to get food, find a place to stay and those kind of things. That's, that's.
I understand, and why can't you get the county, you worked with the county on the property, they bought. And put one out there, you got all kinds of land you're running over. I mean, it's just.
That's a great theory, but I'm assuming the county has.
Well, county's got other things in mind, but I'm pretty sure they, we can work with them on some of it. I mean, how many miles you gonna have out there? I don't have to, all the land.
So we, we haven't got to the, the planning. Earlier, earlier this, this summer, we talked to three different firms just exploring this concept further. And there is a, I'm trying to remember the exact dollar range per, did they do it by foot or did they do it by mile?
I think it was by foot.
By foot. There's a dollar cost and we have it in our notes, Dave, for, uh, what you can expect based on the dollars that we could allocate towards it and the grand dollars that we could receive towards this. There is a, there is a fixed cost to get an estimate on the type of trail. Yeah, the other thing, the Public Land and Trust put out a feasibility, it was an economic study for the impact that mountain biking has on municipalities. And I sent that out to you, to us twice this year. And I would really encourage you to check out the appendix because most municipalities are seeing an annual increase of a hundred fifty thousand to, to over two hundred thousand dollars in revenue in, because of another attraction gaining. So back up from where we, where we started originally was you, you have American Rescue Act money that was passed down to the town through COVID. We then why steward summer. Previous council wanted to purchase an asset versus, uh, spending it on public infrastructure. I think that's a good concept. But we've had multiple meetings this year and, and we don't have any other proposed, or IDAs working on another proposal for us. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of ideas being tossed around that could actually increase traffic, which would result in, uh, potentially more businesses coming to town. We know our workforce is difficult. Uh, manager Dave, when, when talking about, you know, reading one of his news articles on, on why he was advocating for the sports complex was recruiting industry is difficult because we don't have the labor force here to do that. So based on seeing your revenue increase due to tourism, my recommendation is you play to your strengths and find ways to capitalize on that. I think, uh, another article, uh, Francis Southwest Virginia just put out that Virginia reached, uh, was it one billion dollars in, in tourism related funds into the region this, this year? So it's a growing, it's a growing, uh, revenue opportunity for towns. Yeah, nobody wants to hurt water, that's not the intent.
Typically, the folks that are gonna be outrunning the, the trails are environmental conscious people. But even then, I don't think we do this project without ensuring the layout where it does not put our drinking water in any kind of danger. Whether that's fencing, whether that's, uh, careful placement of the trails. I mean, the fact of it is, if somebody wants to be, wants to do something, uh, you know, ill-willed towards our drinking water, they can go out there right now.
Let's go drink the water out there. But, but I also have to launch the, I don't, it, it's just something that all the way back, uh, you know, mayor there, all the way through, they have not touched that property out there because.
A doctor died.
Now we're trying to change something, go out there away from our town, away from our citizens. We got all kinds of things in this town that, that you can, you can work with. I mean, there's people here. I know that some people let you do it. I mean, property, I mean, Fandike's, uh, well, Fandike's using the property, but, uh, county bought all that. I don't, I think the county would probably let you use it, cause it's not doing anything. I mean, there's, what am I doing there? I haven't heard anything about setting, bringing schools in, uh, building a big school out there. Uh, but it hasn't done to that. But that's a good place to ride the bikes now in our hometown where our home people can be accessible to that property. Plus you have, also have property with, in town of, of, of our police protection. And that's what we need. Now you go out there. You go out there and like I'm saying, you set up, you can get it all fixed up, bike riding everything, everybody gets tired of it. It's just like a kid with a toy. They'll play with it so long, you get kicked to the side.
Change it.
They want something else. Well, it's just like us, you know, uh, working out or, or doing basketball or something like that. You get tired of it, you don't show up, it's it, it's done.
Well, the new wave comes in. The new wave comes in. I mean, any, anytime that you're looking at any type of project, this is, this is where it comes under another question. I mean, you basically look at your cash flows that you anticipate to generate based on making that investment. And if the cash flows aren't there, then you don't do that. The only way that you can determine whether your cash flows are gonna offset the initial cost is to look at studies like we're saying. And then build, build partnerships. I mean, the way, the way that we can offset the cost on this is by partnering with the county.
Should look at the studies in Townsboro, if it's people.
The Townsboro has not produced any studies for, for this.
Well, well, they're probably offline, everybody calls it, it's like out there at county, you can work with county, they might help you out. They must say, yeah, bring it home. Then it'll be patrolled and it'll be protected and say, or senior citizens can go out there and watch the biking and stuff. And it's up to show and people start coming in their hometown. When they come in their hometown and they're riding their bikes, when they get hungry, just go on up on Main Street, have fun. Or out in Four Way, have fun, eating that Hardee's, uh, uh, and all the restaurants up here on Main Street. They love it, they must see that. And some of them will probably drive from Grattan and just head off toward Marion, or not Marion, Whittle, and eat up there, eat there. It's just like, I, I like that nothing, that's, you, you do what you gotta do and, uh, but mine's gonna be a day on August six here. I don't like anybody out there on that property. I've been to council enough quite sometimes and I fight for the people in our hometown. And we don't wanna touch the water. And that's just the way I am. I mean, and I think that's why the police officers would like to see, you know, uh, another county, the sheriff's department. That's a headache for them when you go out there and patrol like town and you can't be there all night long. You can't, you can't be there. And it's something to happen that way.
So I think it's the same way with your, you know, we, we were both advocates together for nice vision and Linkshire.
Well, yeah, that's right. And it's, it's, it's in town.
It's impossible, it's impossible to eliminate any of the risks, right? Let's start here.
You can patrol it, you can walk it. I mean, there's kind, you know, you'll have, should have, uh, one of the, the lighting system out there and it's be good all, all the way around the park. But, you know, you, it's, it's easy to patrol and you go out there and patrol it. I worked with town police officers down here, we caught several on the down. They ran or we caught them all. And the reason why we caught them, because the gate was open. You lock that gate, they gonna see what you're doing, open the gate, go on in there, they could be ducking in behind you. We shot up in there and we caught them all. They were all up on the down, running around and didn't know which way to go. But, you know, I'm just telling how we work things in towns, just, our people's gotta add up something that they need. And I know what you're trying to do, I, I don't have no issues with what you're trying to do, but what I'm trying to do because the people in our town needs, needs help, needs their services. We give them money left and right.
I tell you what, my, my concern is, is that we had at least, at least three meetings this year. And one you walked out early on, other ones you haven't participated in. So if you have a better idea, like.
It'd be somewhere in this area in this town. And why I walked out.
Give us, give us some ideas.
Why I walked out is because I had to walk out. I can't tell you what, why I walked out. I had to get, I had to walk out for an issue. And you don't have a right to say, where's he going?
What I can say is.
No, no, listen to me. You, you do what you wanna do, mine's gonna be nay on the way. Because I care about our town people, I care about our citizens here, and I take all their complaints when it comes to me. And this is, it, I don't care if they're rich, poor, I talk to them first. And that's how I do it.
Right. Well, that may have been one meeting, but there's been several others.
Well, two years you haven't been contacting me about going out there and looking at it. If I asked you for it, they just go out there and look at it. Never did, never did, come back and say, let's go, let's go out there and see it. I, you know, I know what it's like out there, I've been out there. So, you know, I mean, go ahead with this plan here, what you're doing, because I know you, the council like passion, but it's like, I'm saying, I haven't said nay on it, because we can bring this in town, we got people in town we can talk to about utilizing the property. They would love it.
My only, my only question, Dave, is if, if no, like let's collaborate as a team to come up with an alternative strategy. If it's killing debt, let's kill debt. You know, right now the money, the money.
What's there?
Right, right.
What you got?
We just, we just pushed that out, we just asked that yesterday. And, uh, we're, we're somewhere around three million. You got about two million.
Three million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, so, so much. Is that what we're in debt for? Well, we're gonna go out there and build something that might last for a year, it might not even last at all. Then it's gonna change into the, the drinking and all that stuff, it's like the partying and dinner, it's gonna be crazy.
Well, Dave, let's just, I mean, we don't need to take up the whole meeting on it.
Yeah, let's not do this, move on.
But, but seriously, I, we are all on the same team. And if not this, which we've, we've had multiple meetings on, if, if we don't pursue it, we're at the initial stages of it, right? So we're, we're still working on collaboration with the county. We've got, we're not even spending town dollars to go research this, which is a tremendous success. We do have local champions, it is an, it is an option. But if, if you're against the option, please provide us with your alternative strategy and let, let's chew on that.
All right. That being said, let's move forward.
Just gotta say, yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Next, uh, let's set a joint, uh, work session for Town Council Planning Commission and IEDA for Monday, uh, December first, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM at, to review the comprehensive plan. I would like to take a motion to approve. Uh, Monday, December first, twenty twenty-five, a conference.
That is the regularly scheduled day for the IEDA and Planning Commission. So I thought maybe it would be a little easier where we don't have two, with the three groups together. If you all would be available at that time.
Fourth day.
Five.
Let me check my schedule, but I, it should be fine. I'm good on that. Make a motion to approve. Say, motion on second, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Just for this right December.
That is for December first at five thirty PM, a joint meeting. Were you?
Yeah, I'm aye.
Okay. All those opposed, say nay. All right, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, EMS renovation project update, manager review.
Um, so myself and our EMS director was supposed to kind of work on this one together. And she had let me know a little bit earlier today, she was stuck in traffic coming back from. let me know a little bit earlier today, she was stuck in traffic coming back from Charlottesville. Um, so I don't think that she's made her meeting, so I'm going to try my best to voice what she was gonna say. Um, we have prepared a request for proposal for our emergency services renovation project. It was issued yesterday. We have a pre-bid mandatory meeting, so the duty of the contractors would like to, um, been on this project, they must attend this meeting or else we can't accept their bid. That will be on October the twenty-ninth at ten eighty on, at the Town of Tassau Emergency Medical Services. Uh, four oh three Still Slane, Task Force Virginia, two forty-six, about one. Um, we do have, you know, the, the whole package has been released. Um, so we would encourage anyone, um, in the construction world to come and, and join us and learn a little bit more about what we would like to do up there. So, um, this was congressional directed spending, uh, grant that we have received. And three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars of this is grant. Um, the town didn't have to have a portion of matching funds, so they put up three hundred thousand dollars, making the total six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Our engineers that we procured was Thompson and Litten for their services. They prepared a pro-proposal. P A R?
P E R.
I think this one was architecture, not engineer, I say, that's, that's what I was trying to make sure I got it right. Um, but uh, they offered two options. One was to build from the ground up, and that was over four million dollars. One was to take what we have and restructure it. Um, and this was the part that the area EMS director was gonna kind of take the lead on, but um, they are in desperate need of just some more space and some more configuration up there. Um, they have offices that are kind of dual purpose as sleeping quarters as well. Um, so this is a much needed improvement to their facility. And I, I always shot, I had very many more details than I know that she did. Um, but it, it is, it's a good needed project, so, um, hopefully next month I will be able to give you an update on what our pre-bid meeting was. And this bid is due on November the nineteenth at two o'clock.
Uh, I might have misunderstood this, are we, the R F P, is it for the expansion or is it for the demolition and rebuild or is it for either or?
Um, it's going to be to reconfigure and, and restructure what is there now.
Okay.
Um, there would be additional bays that would be added and taking maybe some of the bays there now and repurposing them for either office or sleeping quarters.
Okay. Cause based off the, my fault was based off the, what we saw at the pavilion. You know, four million dollars was the expected cost for a tear down and rebuild? Is that really what we would say if we got into it? But that's just a thought that I had. But if this is the way you feel was the, and, and uh, Director Salinas feels that this is the best, then I'm good with whatever it goes. And if she wants the location?
Um, she has stated that it is very, um, I don't wanna use the word convenient, but they, they have a lot of calls.
High call volume.
Right, yes. They have a lot of calls up in that area. Um, so it is, it's a much faster response time for them to have that location.
Sounds good, any other discussion?
Uh, I don't wanna take up too much time on it, but the, I, I am curious, and we had looked at with the lease fours, we went to a leasing program. Uh, the EMS vehicles just looking at the, the amount of miles on them, and we just got one, put it in the plane, we got two in the plane. Uh, just stats update on that, they're in good shape, uh, are there any concerns, is that coming up in the next budget year?
There's concerns, yes.
Right.
With the transfers that they do and becoming to have more age and more mileage. Um, yeah, and, and we have, I'm not gonna consult, we have got two ambulances now, okay, just wanted to be sure. But.
How's the availability for transports?
Those are, I think what we mainly used were the transports, yes. There are lots more, yes.
And moving back a couple of years, the transports are, although they put a lot of guarantee on the vehicles, that's what put the EMS into a, into a light situation. It's amazing. Yeah, that, that, that's where they became, uh.
Net positive.
Sustained.
Sustained, so that's the word I'm looking for.
Would you all like for me to ask her to give an update at the next council meeting, just kind of where they're at, call volume, that type of thing? I, I think she would be more than willing to do so.
Well, I think it'd be beneficial. And I just think that's one of those items that we'll have to take into consideration when we move into budgets.
Um, I, I can give you a preview. At your next council meeting, there, there will be a department update from the fire chief as well. So be ready for that.
Yeah. Tell us what they need, the fire department, yeah, they, they need a new fire truck. State law, isn't it what's, what's, so tell me something about the state law on fire, but you have to take this, they, uh.
The N F P A standard said fifteen years, but we have got recent information saying we can keep them as long as twenty-five years. But we're still pushing that.
So he's gonna have a presentation for you all next.
Okay. Is that, did you have more to say?
No, it's, it's need a fire truck, it really needs, you got, you got to have a, a wrestling squad and a fire department and the police department to watch your town or shoot.
All right. Okay, moving on, we have the, uh, Route four sixty waterline replacement project update, manager review.
Okay. So even though it doesn't look like there's been a whole lot of movement on that project, there has. Um, in the first week of October, there were seventeen one-inch taps completed. Yesterday, they fixed a drain pipe. Tomorrow, they will be installing the last taps, uh, for that section. We have held discussion back and forth, um, on how to proceed with paving. So, drum roll, I'm very happy to announce, Monday, Melvin's Superprize will be coming to mill the, the lane that has been worked on and paved it. And if they don't finish Monday, they will be back Tuesday morning to finish and that, that will be paved.
Complete the whole thing, make it level?
Just that, just that.
That one lane in the spring, they will be coming back to mill the other lane. And they're gonna pave it, and if any, any type of settling has occurred, they will place a leveling layer of asphalt on the lane that we're getting credit to do.
Okay, that's, I'm not sure. In terms of the paving, could you give us a start, so stops and then for what they're adding to this?
Um, it will be Purus Street out to the intersection there and that red light. Um, and so by, by having this contracted out, um, Thursday, we are going to start with the four-way hill section, tie in those lines, there are fifteen, um, taps to do and two street ties to do. Um, we have done air back T tests that are required from Hill Department, we have passed those. Um, once the ties are done, they will be doing pressure testing. And then we're going to, the, the town on this portion is going to pay that side because it's not in, in the middle of the road. It's more or less on like half the length of the shoulder. So we will be paving that and then in the springtime, we will look financially, which is the better option. We will overlay that whole entire road.
So we're looking at other than that?
Yes.
Big castle across here.
Yes, yes. It will be done before winter time, um, the asphalt plant closes the week of November the tenth. So, that is our, that is the update.
So before November the tenth, the whole stretch, the two Hardee's is paved.
That's, that is what we're doing.
For the paving. Uh, I had a citizen in town come up and pass, I guess they, the initial load that was sent out, traffic was supposed to be running one way through that stretch. And they've got it, I mean, we sat up there and watched cars basically, but there's an enforcement issue there because they, they are running both ways. I don't know, that's anything that you all have monitored or, um?
I, I have spoke with Chief Lambert and they have been trying to set out some more enforcement points, um, and to set out and monitor that. And it hasn't had any.
We haven't caught any, but they've been sending out there, um, trying, trying to catch them, but it's, it's enough.
Which way, which way though?
Open is if you enter from Ben Bolt's side, going to Hardee's. That is the correct method to travel.
I just don't think that the public realizes that, especially out of towners, that some of the problem is.
With one-way signs, you know, are there any one-way signs?
I think it says rim closed at the bottom there, right?
It does, but where they see, yeah, yeah.
And we need to have work sign signs up.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
And of course, the morning time is the worst time, um, we're hearing, but we have all the school traffic and so it's, and the evenings as well, and school traffic.
Can this, a little water. Can we get, check on, uh, to, uh, bid this out for somebody that knows, you know, lays up waterline, uh, had it paid in no time, I mean, this is a long drag out issue here.
It's an eighteen-month project.
Yes.
Okay. Um, as far as getting procurement for another company, um, other than the town to do it, I'm not sure that we're able to do that because we have signed agreements and contracts that we were the labor force behind it. So that is something that I have to check into with the Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water to see if we even have that option. Um, I would like to say that I am very confident in Air Water Crew and the work that they do. The inspectors from Thompson and Litten and the Hill Department have brought every meeting on the board that Air guys have done. So I'm very proud of them and I know that they have worked very hard.
Oh my gosh.
Well, it's good to know that the end is in sight and we will get through it, it's been difficult, but we've learned a lot, improved a lot, and we're, we're.
We have strategized a lot for the next phase that we're doing of this project and, um, we will have a much better understanding of what we are up against, so.
About the businesses. Maybe work with them out there.
There, there are some options that, that I have, I'm not ready to discuss just yet, but we're looking at options of things that we could do to help the property owners in the affected areas.
I see. The town buildings, should be a tax break with them.
I think, we need to do some, I think we need to do some research on that and and see what we have the ability to do and talk to the business owner and see, you know, what the best route to the county is.
And I'm, I'm already doing research on this, so I will have something to, to bring later time, just, I don't have everything ready right now.
No worry. Next, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, upgrade project update.
Air wastewater treatment plant upgrade, uh, we had a kickoff with Orders Construction, who was their contractor for this, this project. Um, it was held on September the twenty-ninth. They anticipate work being in November and they have eighteen months to complete the project. And our employees at the wastewater treatment plant are very excited.
I'd say so. Are they, they still holding up good, I mean, I know they're, uh, they're anticipating the upgrades, but everything's still in working condition?
We, we had a belt go down, um, Monday, and I think Jessica ordered it today.
Yes.
So that was something we, we can't operate without, we need that belt. But yes, they're very excited.
Great, yeah. All right, I'm gonna come back to you one more time with the Clinch River Pavilion update.
So the Clinch River Pavilion, um, we've received three bids. Uh, the lowest bid came in at two hundred sixty thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. It was from Heritage Metal, it's a local business here in town, out on Walnut Street. They will be doing the construction of the pavilion, the bathroom, and the prep kitchen. Uh, they anticipate beginning work in February and they do understand that the market season is the very first part of May and they do anticipate to be finished. And the farmers market will be able to be at their keep home. And, um, October the sixteenth, which is this coming Thursday, um, a year ago, we held a meeting down at the train station and it was over this project in the North Tassau Revitalization Project. So we are going to be, uh, rolling out the red carpet on this Thursday and putting all this information out there to say, this is, this is what we've done in a year, yes, it seems like it's been a very long time, but, um, Karen Weber with D E Q assures us that we're moving fast. So this will be a good piece of information and a good win for the North Tassau community, so.
What's the date and time for that?
Uh, they anticipate beginning work in February.
What about for the, the sixteen, October the sixteen?
I'm sorry, yes, October sixteenth, Thursday, we will.
Two, two days from now?
Yes, we will be making a, a big post, announcing everything to the public and kicking off that celebration for North Tassau.
Is there, are we rallying out there, is it a group, is it photo op, is it?
We were going to do that, um, however, I would like to do that when it comes to groundbreaking.
Sure.
For the company to start their work. So that will come up, um, close to February, so bring your coats.
I have those.
Um, completion date, they know that the market begins in May, so they do anticipate being completed before then.
It's before?
Before the market season. Could be April thirty.
All right, next on the agenda is Miss Lanings, I don't believe we have anything, we do? Nope, sorry.
Um, kids fish day, out at Lincolnshire Park this past Saturday. Um, that's the first time that I had went to that event and I enjoyed it so much because you've seen the kids come out and, you know, who fishes in the swimming pool? And it was great, hundred and sixty-seven kids.
Wow.
One sixty-seven. So, um, our public works, our recreation department, they, they had that off and they did a fantastic job, so.
I, I took my kids out and attended that and I'll say, partnering that with the Fire Prevention Week and, uh, the, everybody involved, the public works, the fire department, everybody kicked in and did a great job. Having the bouncy houses, making that a full event, that was a, a great, great, uh, you know, event and a great opportunity for the kids to go out and.
And one of the fire department members volunteered to fillet any of the fish that was caught, so that was, that was very much enjoyed, I believe, so. Yeah, that was a great event.
They got screens, or places out screens for a little.
It did.
Great.
One other, just a little, we don't have wood on our windows for these ones. The window was repaired, so.
Somebody get a resin real quick, we'll cut.
The, uh, ladder is on its way.
All right.
And then turn it over to the, to the program for us.
Sounds good.
What, what about the, uh, little flower box, flagpole holder?
We're willing to contact, um, the vocational school and see if they would wanna come and bring some students out and just repair that.
Thanks, sounds good.
All right, do we have any mind for Miss Slace?
Yes, uh, Miss Emily Combs.
A little message, yeah.
Uh, Emily Combs, Davis, wouldn't you work on support? Um, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments, cause. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments because I know I was on council when we first started talking about this. Okay, so the mountain bike project. The town of Tassle owns two pieces of property in Grattan, correct? One of them has a water source, the other one does not. Now, the one that we're talking about developing for the mountain bikes, is that the one with the water source or without?
So the water source is on the southern edge of that property?
Okay, because when I'm looking at the property, there is a ridgeline and we're looking at developing the front of that ledge, ridgeline that faces Grattan Road, Grattan Avenue, whatever it's called, if, if you keep on going down. And then there's a ridgeline, it goes down into a valley and then another ridgeline and where that valley is, ends up going out into Diamond Rock. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's where the water source is, is that?
The water source is at the, if you, all right, so looking at it on the map, if you take, take the road up and, and what the county did years back, maybe it was collaboration county in town, but there were some line controls out there. There is a kind of a kiosk in a parking lot.
Okay.
And then if you go south of that parking lot, you can see that, that's visible on Google Maps.
Okay.
You go south of that, there's a water tower.
Okay.
And then further, like even further south of that, there's a, there's a Cox Branch that runs through there.
Okay.
There used to be an old mill and there's a little bit of a, there's a little bit of a dam, little, little place of fish, basically. There's not any fish there hardly.
A pretty trout.
There's some biggerling trouts out there, but the, where the trail is developed, I guess your, your biggest obstacle could be ingressing, like traffic flow.
Right.
And otherwise, you're, you're in the woods, you're, you're away from it.
I was thinking it was in the, over on the ridgeline where it wouldn't be the trail, is what I was thinking.
I mean, based on looking at the map, I, I think it's a marginal issue. It's something that you need to plan for, however, it's, it's just too far south to be in play, based on like the 503 acres that are out there.
Right, well, I do not have anything that is motorized.
No motor, yeah.
No motorized. And I just wanted to say, you know, as for a, you know, getting people in the area to spend money viewpoint, you gotta use what you have. And one of the things that we have around here is we have mountains all around us, but we don't have access to the mountains. All of the trails that you used to be able to hike to get on top of a mountain are on private property. So if I'm going to go out to hike, I have to go someplace else. And mountain biking is not like riding your bike down a hill, you know? As for the, having that in-town property, I don't think that we have anything that would be mountainous enough to have that. And we also don't have enough property. You know, I mean, that piece of property is 500 acres. Where are you going to find 500 acres in town? And if you get it from a individual landowner, you're either going to have to get them agreed to it, which would be very hard because that would be a whole lot of individual liability on that individual landowner, or you're going to have to buy that property.
What? Buy the property?
Yes.
Insurance coverage? So you're saying if somebody gets hurt out there?
I was saying that it would be, it would be more likely that the town would be able to cover that insurance than an individual.
What I'm trying to do is try to get our taxpayers to pay the towns and, you know, pay as much as it is. They should be able to have it in-town. This is the thing, but not, not out Grattan, not out Grattan, in our town, where senior citizens get it.
Okay, how many senior citizens do you know that ride mountain bikes?
Well, there's a few probably. I can ride a bike.
Can you ride a mountain bike? Down mountain?
Yes, I can do anything, just about.
Awesome, well, then you would be in the minority.
But I'll have the money.
But here's the thing, the town will benefit from having it in Grattan. There's nothing for anybody to stay in Grattan or eat in Grattan. So you're capturing all of that tax money in the town, not in Grattan. So that's all I wanted to say.
Still be in-town.
Okay, any, anybody else on the public comment?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. We have council comments? Anybody on the council having comments?
Yeah, I, I do. Because it's been a more heated of a discussion.
I'll just, I'll just say, he's speaking for.
But do you want to say, like collectively, and this is one of the things that I hope that when folks go back and they watch our town council meetings, it's different than it's maybe some other municipalities. Seriously, I do mean this, like we are on the same team, working for the same vision, which is making Tassel better. And I do think that that occurs through sometimes heated discussions, just like we've, we've had this evening. So in this, like, we're all on the same team. One, I, I sign off some of you on the time, one team, one bite, right? Because we, we're all aiming at the same thing, which is like making our town better for its citizens, that's the reason you get out and you do public service. It's not for the little bit of monetary incentive we receive. The, the amount of work is clearly much more than what that, that payment is. So we're on the same team, but we do need to have these, and that's part of the reason that we have discussions, you know, across this year is, is to, to have those collaborations to, to collaborate, work together. I do think, I want to use the plain example, I love the way that that unfolded because there was an incorporation of a public, public listening session to where folks were able to come up and raise their concerns. And, you know, we partnered with our stakeholders in the farmer's market, included them in the conversation the entire time. We do have local championships. I'm with you on the access to town. I understand that concern. Unfortunately, it's not the lot we've dealt, but, and that's even in the studies, that is more beneficial when you can, like, and that's why Ms. Paccaro was saying in Knoxville, you ride your bike on the trail and then you ride down to the, the burgerie and you have a beer and hamburger and you go home. That is a better option. Maybe we look at Now Rock and the future burgerie space and agree on it. We're not there yet, but I do want to say collectively, everybody's on the same team. We're working towards the same mission. And, and we are at the early stages where we are using other people's money to explore a concept and then we'll bring in the community and if shut down, like we need to have Plan Two in place for how you pivot once you look at it. The IDA is working very hard towards having collaborative projects, right? You're going to hear this time and time again from us, town and county need to work together, along with working with the Comfort Plateau Planning Mission, make sure that all these strategic objectives line up so that we are the most, the most successful we can be in getting the most grand dollars to offset the tax burden. The reason for using the art of funds is because that's federal dollars and not our taxpayer dollars. Use toward buying an asset that can be used to help the shops on main, to help the restaurants in the area, to, hey, I mean, if you go medical, if you're building mountain bike control, there's going to be more medical issues. There's going to be more medical expenses. You, you have to build an attraction when you don't have industry. We've demonstrated over the last 12 years, pretty dang difficult to recruit industry loads. The Blue Stone is still empty. And so we'll work on it, put you on it together. And we do involve the public so that these things get aired out and I believe that making sure that everybody's properly informed is the best way to do it. Where we are right now is just using county dollars through a grant that they received somewhere else to explore a concept. Nothing wrong with doing that because it's not our taxpayer dollars going towards it. My other council member comment is, is that seriously, we all need to be reading our emails. And I'm not pointing out anybody individually, I'm not saying because I sent one email.
The emails, what emails I get, man? You, that's what bothers me. It bothers me a whole lot. You're on different types of emails, sending out, I said, where the hell did that come from?
I, I send emails from my town email.
Yeah, town email, but the emails on, that we, we have, I get emails from, sometimes I get from you, I read it, I look over it and I look, uh, is it on another account? I mean, you gotta leave it on one account. Y'all jumping around like, like a frog. And it just, you know, I'm not gonna say, I, I've just fed up with the issue here, but I'm going to fight for my people and that's what I'm going to do. I don't care what y'all want to come up with, do what you want to do, but I got a feeling it's going to cause issues in a, in a later date. It's going to be a big problem, a big problem because you're not having a good patrol out there, you're not, it's just, and the officers got to have, they got to answer calls all over this county and the town's got to answer all the calls in the town unless they're requested to go out to the county and help to assist. We don't have that many officers and I, I definitely want to have my, my property protected by, by our police department. You're going way out and, you know, I could say, only thing I have to say, when you get it going, I, I just, it just got to see if it's going to be well-protected and there are people in our town, you know, paying our taxes. My gosh, we, it, it's just, we got to build, get our stuff built in our town to satisfy people. I mean, they're, they're always asking, when's it going to be up? When's it going to be up? You said it's supposed to be up last year and it's not. We're still looking over it. The provision should be already up and running.
I think we, I think we've hashed it out several times and we've.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying. Sometimes you got to speak a little louder so you can understand, but.
Sometimes.
The theater is supposed to be running, I don't know when it's going to run, but that should be going. I mean, that's what people, the taxpayers are looking at, what's going on? And that, just, just so you can, I'll bring it up, but I can't say I'll, you know, win the case or anything, but we got to understand, we got to, just like, when you had the, the programs on Main Street, you got something going in the North Tassel area, which I'd almost like to see, like I brought that up a long time ago in reference to parades and stuff in the North Tassel district. And they begin to do this and, and it's just in the people's life. They're loving it. And I, you know, I don't have anything, it's just my opinion in reference to what I'm looking at. And I hope, you know, nobody gets hurt, I hope nobody gets in trouble, I hope no, nothing goes home in, in, in the location where you want to put it up, spend all the money for police protection. And sometimes police don't have that time to, you can never really hit that area all the time. That's, you know, they can get there quick, but, I mean, it's just something you gotta look at.
I can tell you, speaking with, this one has elevated trail designs, the access for emergency medical treatment, like that's part of those considerations. That will come up in the discussions and we'll definitely get into that hard when we get to that point. Right now, we're just, we're not there yet, we're exploring the concept, so.
Okay, exploring, yeah. But like I'm saying, our tax dollars, there's just, it's not, it seems like we're, taxpayers in this town, what do we get out of this? What do we get out of this? Some people can pay the taxes and it don't bother, the town's getting closer, we're, you're going to hurt me a little bit. We just got to do, I, I, you know, I'd like to see, the food taxes, I wish they'd break down even lower, the food taxes that we could make through, you might have more businesses coming in this town. You've got to lower substance for them to come in, taxes out of yin yang, property tax, you know, like I said, you got to have property taxes. Senior citizens here in town would like to see that, a property tax for them. Then I don't care where you go to bill, but, you know, our senior citizens need to be looked at. You're going to be, you're going to get the O one day and you're going to start thinking about, well, back in our days, I had a glass. I mean, we did, I made one bit, played softball and, uh, uh, farm and used cow patties to be bases. We had glass. I mean, it's just something like that. We're giving too much, we're giving too much to people that they want. They want so much and they want more and they're more. And I think that there's times that we're going to have to look at and see, listen, people are going down and looking at people barely making it. They like to be having fun too. I mean, but hell, we're just, they're just crying paying all these taxes. We got to lower our taxes and somehow we could do that, but we got to work in a different way. You say you're getting all these grants, federal grants, we're going to have to pay back. Do we have to pay state grants? Do we get grants and we have to pay 50/50 with them? We had to pay, they give the money, we had to pay them right back, all right? So, well, I'd like to see just straight out, we're going to have to give tax money back. The government should give us something that we don't want to pay back. But our taxes, we, we're taxing ourselves and people in this town, it's not, they can't afford it.
So from a business perspective, there's two ways to, to control, either you grow your revenue or you cut your expenses. And in this approach, we're trying to grow revenue.
That's right.
If you want to cut taxes, you have to raise the revenue to offset the tax cut. I'm a conservative person, I'm all about that. I don't like paying taxes any, any more than anybody, like why? Like who wants to pay taxes?
We should be able to lower the taxes. Taxes are food taxes, you can take people in. I mean, food taxes are killing me, it's hard to, it's reasonable, it's getting more work.
Maybe we could talk about more on how that looks here in the budget season. I, I think it's something that deserves a lot of attention and certainly give it, but until you decide what you're going to cut, like you cannot lower your taxes because we run a balanced budget.
That's because of the reason they were dying all year and it's not right.
We have a change in our business taxes. I tell you what, here's another example of how we're working deliberately to, to, to fight that. Part of, part of adding on a economic development coordinator and assistant, adding a branch to Miss Lee Anne's office is to do that cross-comparison. We have a team of IDA members that are made up of a bunch of volunteers and the time and the requirement is not there. So like, that's part of the job scope, is to look at how competitive we are against other municipalities. We are actively working on that. And, and I had this discussion with, with a business owner in town recently, you know? It's difficult for local governments to raise, recruit industry, but what we can do is look at our controllables and manipulate those. With our IDA, we've worked towards expanding our Virginia Enterprise Zone. We have reevaluated our incentives. We're actively going to be comparing our, our incentives and our taxes across other municipalities and looking at what we can tweak to make it better. But within our controllables, over the last two years, we've deliberately actioned that and, and a lot of it goes unseen because that's in the weeds. Not, not many common people are watching the YouTube videos or reading the agenda notes, but you, between the council and the IDA, we, we have a collaborative group reemphasizing that, that's actively working those issues. We beat it to death.
Messages, messages, emails, drop logs.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Time to adjourn.
You got a motion on second, any discussion?
We're trying.
All those in favor say aye. Motion second. Speed board adjourn.